To the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Could the Secretary perform a roll call attendance, please?
Mr. Washington, here.
Here.
Is that on the table?
Here. Here. Okay. All board members have received the minutes from the September 6th meeting. If there's no questions or concerns with the minutes, entertain a motion to accept them, as written.
I'll make a motion to accept them.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for site plan and special use permit for Over Creek Farm Brewery and Tasting Room Site Plan. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I was hoping just to make a couple of introductory remarks, since this is a public hearing, just to say, I'm Alex Reese. I'm the owner of Over Creek Farm. And I'm here with my partners for an Over Creek Brewery. Over Creek Farm, as you know, is located between the New Hamburg and Marlerville Road areas in the town of Wapanger. It's an old dairy farm. My father gave up the dairy cows in the early 60s. And that's the two barns that we're looking to renovate come from the era of the dairy farm, which were built back in the early 20th century. I started an organic farm back in 2012 with some partners. It's mainly vegetables. We also grow hops. And we're looking to try to do barley this year. In 2016, these friends and I sat down and we tried to see whether we could start a small brewery. It was something that we were all sort of dreaming about. We went to the state and we received a farm brewery license, which is an agricultural enterprise under Ag and Markets. And we started in a five bay garage and started really small. We're a nano brewery, three barrel system. But people sort of liked the beer and enjoyed the farm atmosphere and it started gaining some traction. So now, I think, we were thinking that the logical step was to take these old barn structures and renovate them and turn them into the next step for Over Creek Brewery with an actual brewery and a tasting room. But I wanted to stretch or stress, we're still a nano brewery. We're going from a three barrel system to a five barrel system. This isn't going to be a large brewery. This is going to be a community-based asset. And we hope that the community continues to enjoy it. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Kyle.
Thank you, Alex. Good evening. Kylie Hernmibabella, Associates, civil engineer for the project. So Alex gave the quick overview of the project in general. I just wanted to go through the site plan and just kind of point out some of the features existing and proposed. Okay. So this is New Hamburg Road along the front edge of the property. The existing Over Creek Farm stand is located in this small building up front. There is the driveway, which is to remain, but is going to be widened to 20 feet for fire access. Is here. It's also going to be turned into one-way ingress only. The existing sign for the farm stand will remain. The existing post and rail fencing will remain. The existing grass meadow between the road and the farm stand will also remain. And the parking for the farm stand located just south of the farm stand will also remain. It's an existing gravel lot. There's approximately, well, there are 10 parking spaces located there. And like I said, those will remain. So there are 73 additional proposed spaces in these three areas. This third lot is going to be land banked. So if it's determined that additional parking spaces are needed for supporting the brewery and tasting room, those will be built out. And the first two lots will be built up front and will also be gravel. There is essentially a roundabout here, although it doesn't continue all the way around. This area will get pavers, but it'll be grass. And the pavers are only there for fire access. The handicap parking is all located at this location. That will be concrete. So it'll be an accessible surface and located as close to the tasting room as possible. We spoke at the last meeting about the wetland buffer. So there are wetlands on site. Those are these areas here, one, two, and three. And then the crosshatching outside of those wetland areas, that is the town buffer area. So the project has some minimal disturbance that we spoke about for the handicap parking spaces. This is essentially existing disturbances. There was actually a barn at this location previously. That's no longer there. But the ground's been graded out in that location. So there's those spaces and then some boulders to delineate the buffer in its new location and some landscaping as well. So the new, like I said, the existing driveway will be ingress only. So we do have a second driveway proposed that has been reviewed by the county. And they've approved it in plan form. We'll have to apply for a highway work permit once we're ready to actually perform that work. But they've reviewed sight distances and geometry for that exit only. I think that's the main, oh, since the last meeting, we did hear back from SHPO. So they have indicated that they'd like to see a Phase 1A and 1B archeo study be performed, specifically in the areas that were not included in some of the previous work that's been done at the site. So back in 2012, there was a report for the subdivision that's located between New Hamburg Road east of this project and Marlerville Road. At the time, the project contemplated a subsurface disposal sewage system, where the new system more or less is proposed. So there was some work done at that time. But we'll need to supplement that. We have not heard back from the DEC yet. So we're still waiting on their response to our submission on endangered and threatened species. And we also reached out to them to schedule a pre-application meeting for the speedies permit we'll need for the sewage. And we have not heard back that. I think that's about it. We got the comments before the previous meeting. We've made some revisions to the plans. So that, the revised plans, in addition to the revised SWIP and the SHPO correspondence, we will be submitting with our next package to you guys. Just going to open it now to you guys or the public.
Before we open up the floor, any board members have any questions for the applicant?
I do not.
Okay. No? All right.
I'm good.
All right. So at this time, I'll open the floor for public comment. If anybody wishes to speak, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, board members. My name's John Detwiler. Live at 6 Hamilton Road. I'm the third generation in my family to live there. We've been there a long time. And I guess my first question for you is, what's the process here? Mr. Reese comes to you with a plan. I guess he's the first, you're the first group that he gets in front of. And you hear his plan and you kind of consider it and how it affects the community and the neighbors and whether or not it's a positive plan.
Yeah, that's the purpose of the public hearing, is to get public comments. So if there's anybody that lives around there that has any questions, concerns, you know, they have the opportunity now to bring that up. And then going forward, the applicant would have to address all the questions that are brought up tonight in future submissions.
And then ultimately, once everyone has had their chance to speak and they've answered the questions, you guys or you seven will make the final decision on whether or not it's approved? Is that how that works?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then it goes to zoning or it stops there?
I don't believe this application needs a variance for anything.
Okay.
So if they're building it as of right, basically, building it as per the regulations that the zoning code allows them to build, they don't, you know, and they don't need some type of relief from those regulations, they wouldn't have to go to the zoning board.
Okay.
Okay.
So what criteria would you base your decisions on? Is it whether or not the community wants it, whether or not you think it's a positive influence on the community? What are you guys looking at this? What perspective?
This is a hard, I mean, this is not, I'll answer this last one. This is not a question and answer period. If you, basically, if the project is being designed and it meets the criteria, which is within the zoning code, and there is no real public outcry about this being built, the board most likely will, you know, approve the project because it's within the property owner's rights to build that. Okay? So if there was, for some reason, there was, you know, there was other circumstances, let's say you have some serious concerns tonight that you would like to bring up, this is the time where we collect all that information. We make, we put it on the applicant to address each concern, to make sure that there isn't any real concern. Or if there is, how are they going to remedy that problem? Okay?
Okay.
And we would go from there. Okay? So that's basically what we're basing our decision on.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
So I assume that the current outdoor bar and drinking venue has gone through this process. And we live about 500 feet from that. And the one thing I don't see on the site plan now is where the stage will be because it's quite noisy every Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It's really an outdoor live music venue more than anything. It's nothing to do with making beer, that I can tell.
Okay.
So, you know, he's going from three barrels to five barrels. So a barrel is sort of, you know, what does that mean? Is that gallons? Because how many gallons is in a three barrel and five? He's going to 13,000 square feet, I think, from a five bay garage. So I can only assume that there's going to be a lot more people there, drinking and screaming and yelling and sounding their air horns and revving their motors up the road. You know, it seems to me that this land was kept farmland with tax incentives for probably 100 years. And it seems like now he's going to take that opportunity to cash in on that and change the neighborhood. So, I mean, we're talking about 83 parking spots. And what we typically see on Marlerville Road is that the street is lined with cars in addition to whatever parking spots he has. So that's always a problem. It's going to be more of a problem on New Hamburg Road than it is on Marlerville. I don't know if this project is going to eliminate the brewery that's on Marlerville Road or is it just going to be an extension of it? You know, and then I think it's also important to talk about the other projects that Mr. Reese has done. He's been approved for a 13 lot development that just is sitting in limbo. It's going to be a 50-year construction project. There's two houses or three houses up and there's no end in sight. There's construction on our road for years and years. He, you know, deforested the land 10 years ago. It sits with real estate signs laying on the ground. There's broken fences. There's garbage bin surrounds that are falling down. There's unfinished stormwater protection ponds that were never planted or they're silting in. So, you know, there's chicken coops along Connor Road that are built with found construction material that stink up the neighborhood. And I guess we can expect more of that if we give him permission to do another project. Because I'm not seeing any end in sight to that. I hope that will be part of your consideration, is the developer involved. You know, he owns a lot of property all around there. So you won't see a lot of people here complaining because they're his tenants, which is our biggest battle. And he has no incentive to fix those properties. They're just rentals that are falling apart. Zoning has changed to allow the row homes on Marlerville Road to stay, even though they're non-conforming. So I can expect that they're not going to get any better. You know, he's got trees that line the streets of Marlerville and Hamilton that just are rotten and fall down every time the wind blows and take our power out. So, you know, to offer him another project to continue on with this is really something I hope that is considered. So that's really what I have to say about that. Really, I don't know if any of you live close to the current brewery, but I can tell you it's very disruptive. It goes on every weekend. There's people screaming and yelling. There's drunk people leaving. There's live music every single day. And it's really obnoxious. And I think one of you guys did ask about live music the first time Mr. Reese presented. And it was breezed over. And I would like to hear more about that because that's the biggest problem that we're facing. We've asked the sheriff to help. We've talked to all of the partners of Over Creek. They won't even answer the phone anymore. The sheriff and the state troopers won't do anything about it. So I hope that you will keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else? Come on up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jean Van Tassel and I live on Hamilton Road.
Which number, Hamilton Road?
Four Hamilton Road. And are you all aware that Route 9D is one lane going south and one lane going north? Does everybody know that? There's not a lot of area on 9D. Okay. So there's one traffic light. Already now, we have the train station going through that. You've approved the gas station at the intersection of that. The property opposite the gas station is also commercial property. You've approved Mr. Reese to subdivide his farm to building lots. The access to those building lots is New Hamburg Road and Marlerville Road. No other way out. The traffic from New Hamburg Road, he has a farm market and he's selling off the building lots. Traffic backs up on Middle Bush Road, all the way up to Middle Bush Road from the traffic light on 9D and all the way down to past Ketchum Town Road coming north on 9D. So now we're going to add another business to go up to that traffic light and go north or south or whatever. It's, traffic is a nightmare there already. And to add another business, I've lived in my house. I'm 81 years old. I've lived there 65 years. There are times when I can't leave my neighborhood because I can't get out onto 9D. And that's the access roads for me. Unless I go Creek Road, which if you're familiar with that, it's slowly falling into the Wapenders Creek. And it's a very dangerous road. So you're going to add to the more traffic if you approve this building. And it's really affecting the quality of life situation for me. I can't get out. I mean, I have to go out two hours early to go to a restaurant at 6 o'clock because of the traffic building up. So before you consider any more building or businesses, please think about that. Think about the people who are already living there. That's all I ask. I know you said last time you were going to do a traffic study. If you had done that two years ago, we probably wouldn't be facing a gas station at that intersection.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Marcy Wagman, 50 Old Troy Road, a neighbor of Over Creek. When this town became a Greenway Compact Community of the Hudson River Valley Conservancy in the 1990s, the expectation was that our town, with its special position as a river town, would focus on the ideals as expressed by the Greenway Council. When the town adopted its master plan several years ago, these ideals were further reinforced. This project ticks all the boxes that are expressed in these initiatives. It's a true destination for both the residents and visitors. It preserves not only history through the adaptive reuse of the barns, but also preserves the agricultural and green spaces so important to us. It's exactly the kind of economic development, providing jobs, unique services and products that enhances and distinguishes our community. I urge the board to not only approve this site plan for this project, but to learn from it and to actively use it as a model for future projects and developments in this town. So thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Jason Head, 10 Hamilton Road. My main concern for this project is the traffic on Marlerville Road. I don't know if this is, I've looked at this before I left the house. I didn't see anything, any markings if they're actually going to close down the traffic, or not the traffic, excuse me, the parking that's off of Marlerville Road. I'm worried about the drinking and driving, obviously. There's a lot of kids in the neighborhood. And my other concern is environmental study or the impact of it, what that effect will have on the drinking water. We're all, all the houses in this neighborhood are on a well. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Is there anyone else?
Hey, good evening. My name is Nick Dennehy. I live at 62 Marlerville Road, which is directly across the street from the current location. I own that house. Purchased it from another friend of mine, tenant of Mr. Reese. It's an old farmhouse. I just wanted to sort of say that, you know, I've lived in that house for a couple of years. I find the staff, people that work at the farm to be very friendly, very neighborly. When there were noise complaints, we got letters in our mailbox saying, look, if you have concerns, come to us, we'll talk to you. That was great. In terms of the parking on Marlerville Road, I agree, there is often parking on that road and that actually kind of drives me nuts. But I will say that on the website, they say not, don't park on Marlerville Road. They seem to have extended the parking there now to allow for more parking. And they even say, you know, drive under 30. You know, it's on the website. You know, it's not like perfect, but it's a good, you know, it's a good thing. That being said, you know, they've clearly, I think, outgrown the spot that they're in. So it seems to be logical. They would move to a larger spot. I agree with a lot of the things that have been said about, you know, the gas station, traffic leaving, you know, traffic on Marlerville Road, like it can be a problem. I don't necessarily see that as the brewery's fault. You know, I think the gas station, things like that are much more of an issue. I do share some other concerns. I would like to know what's going to happen with that spot. I mean, literally, our house is across the street from the entrance to the driveway. So in, you know, in the mornings, we see the tractors and, you know, parts of the farm moving in and out. And that makes sense that that's where they would go and come and go. I would like to know what else is going to happen in that spot. And I think that's about it. I enjoy going to brewery. I think it's a pretty family-friendly place. I think you're always going to have concerns about people driving drunk and things like that. And, you know, I assume that the people there are responsible, aren't going to just over-serve people. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so none. I guess there's a few questions that have come out of this that I guess still need to be addressed. The question is, the staff, should we leave this, should we leave the public hearing open at this point? Or adjourn it or if we adjourn now?
If you're going to ask the applicant to respond to some comments, then I would leave it open.
Okay. All right. I'm not looking for all the questions to be answered tonight. There's still some stuff asked that's still been put in writing. So here's my, so here's my take on it at this point. We're going to have to adjourn this to another date, certain, because we're going to have to, you know, give a date tonight to state that, yes, we're going to adjourn this for whatever the date is. Do you have any anticipated timeframe of how long it would take for you to, number one, take care of rebuttals? But do you think that some of the other items, cleaning it up on the plan so that, you know, staff can look at it to move forward?
Yes, so the, most of the revisions to the plans have been completed. The one thing that's going to drive the timeline, I think, anyway, is SHPO. So I would say we can resubmit, when's the next submission? Two weeks from today? So I would say we can get everything back in by the 16th.
Oh, so you look to adjourn it to the 16th? No, it would have to be after.
That'd be the deadline, so it would be one after.
Yeah, so you're looking at adjourning it to the November 7th, sorry, November 6th meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So with that said, entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to November the 6th.
I'll move that.
Okay.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Would we be able to potentially draft a resolution for that next meeting? And if the comments are not responded to the board's liking, we can just not act on it at that time?
Leave it up to the board, what's your feeling?
I think we should handle the public hearing items first.
That's what I was going to say. So how many, is there a lot of open-ended items that you're looking for to get addressed prior to that?
No, I think that hearing back from SHPO is the primary thing that this board needs to hear back from before they can take action regarding seeker. As far as site plan elements, it's been a minute since I've reviewed your plans, but I don't recall any major issues with their site plan or their special permit. So, in the hearing...
I'm just not aware of any current review memos for this project. I was only given the ones for the not-public hearings. I'd like to review those and advise them what about.
Okay.
We think there's a showstopper here. But 1A, 1B, that's going to be your critical path.
Yes.
And you need to hear back from DEC also?
Yes. I'm not, well, knock on wood, I'm not expecting an issue with DEC. They're taking a while to respond. But this parcel was previously looked at only a couple of years ago for the same species. So I would expect their response to be, you know, in line with their previous guidance.
But also you need DEC for your discharge screening.
Yes, yeah.
How many do you think are located?
I believe it's just south of 4,000 gallons.
Okay. Have you been in contact with Health Department yet?
Yes. The Health Department's already taken a look at the plans. They had some comments. But they, they're essentially awaiting the town's seeker determination before they, you know, continue it along. They also, you know, guided us to reach out to DEC and get the pre-application meeting with them to talk about the speedies permit.
They do have something, then you do that 1A, 1B that could take some time. They have to line up an architect. I don't know if test pitting will be going to be required.
Yes, it sounds like some additional test pitting outside of the areas that have been previously looked at. So we have an archaeologist that has been on the site before and is familiar with it. But they have not done the actual testing.
So would that be in the area of disturbance or is it someplace else?
Would be in the area of disturbance, more focused around the parking areas because the sewage disposal field has been looked at before.
Okay.
So maybe a little premature then to get a draft put together.
I was just thinking, because the next meeting's not until the middle of November, we might have some of those answers. But, you know, we could also, you know, do it at that point.
Let me just leave it at the 6th and hopefully maybe between now and then you'll have some more answers in regard to that.
Sure.
And we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay.
I'm looking for it now.
All right, so, moving on to the agenda here, our next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding Adams of Wappingers.
Good evening, everyone. I'll put this in.
Yeah, let's give them a minute to, give them a minute to all walk out here. Can everybody just take the conversation out in the hallway, please?
Well, good evening again. Steve Betcher, Ed Klavy with Adams Fairer Farms, here with the Wappinger remodel. On the agenda is a vote to amend the site plan application. Since our last meeting, a few things have developed. Leaving it off, we had the first review with letters and comments from CPL and H&amp;H. And at that point, at the last meeting, we gave verbal responses from our engineer. Since Engineering Surveying Properties has submitted a response letter to those initial concerns, as well as an amended site plan dated 9/11, the, and those would be the formal responses. Then there was a second review, comments, they were verbal with Malcolm, H&amp;H, which we discussed on a conference call with our engineer, as well as Malcolm, because they were relatively minor, but some clarifications, which went over into a third amended site plan, not necessarily submitted, but presented to the board via B and Malcolm representing it, based on our conversation. Now, after that, it did trigger a second review from CPL. Thank you for turning that around, by the way, and the fluidity, that whole process is really appreciated. There was a number, a few engineering-related comments that were put out, I believe, on September 28th. We reached out to our engineer, I have his email if you're interested in it. His feeling is that the comments are minor, important, but minor, and trusting they could be conditions for the approval. One note in there, with the comments, was actually a question regarding our sanitary sewer outlet. We do not anticipate modifying the outlet of that, so if that puts any rest, that might be the more tangible one for some, or of concern, but that we don't anticipate having to modify that outlet. We were also asked to meet with, or obtain Fire Prevention Bureau letter comments. We met with Mr. Prager on site. He issued a letter from his, I don't know if it was his office, or it was actually the Fire Prevention Bureau, he was reaching out on behalf of them. But, he took no exception to the proposed location of the relocated fire hydrant. And he did have a couple of concerns that have been addressed, striping in the parking lot being more clear with the existing hydrants or added. So, my understanding there is Mr. Prager was going to reach out to the board, and there's some inner, inner department or inner, inner...
Yeah, no, no, we did, we did receive, yeah, we did receive a memo from him, just, you know, about the, I guess, the hydrant. But I guess he put down that all hydrants must be unobstructed, so I guess there's some other, there might be something else that he pointed out.
Yeah, so there was a hydrant that did have some things in front of it, that was almost immediately removed, and then some striping was installed near another one, so people couldn't park in front of it.
Okay, so it's all cleared up then?
Yes, sir.
All right, because I know, I did hear about one of them, I guess, there was a parking spot in front of it or something.
Correct, yes, yeah.
The whole painting, the stripes all painted in the spot.
Okay, so everything's all been cleaned up?
Now, is that painting reflected in the most recent site plan submission?
Need to double-check.
Okay. It should be shown on the site plan, and it will also be reflected in the parking calculations. I think you, should be fine in the parking calculations. Last I checked, you were nine over, so if you just lost one, that's okay. But, it should be on the site plan, so that if at any point that paint wears away...
It would go back.
Noted.
Okay.
And then Adams did obtain a wetland disturbance permit, although we're, we're in the buffer zone, we're not touching the wetlands, but we do have that.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, other than that, I don't think there was any other, any items? Okay. With that, you did receive the, the draft resolution from the planner?
Correct.
Which I believe there's only, well, you got one change, right? Just to reflect the most recent letter?
Yes, and I am also going to make sure, I'm going to update the plans with your, with this, right? You're going to, you're going to update that, you're going to send me a new site plan, I'm going to make sure that the site plan has that on it, and I will amend the resolution to reflect that, as well as...
So, it'll be adding letter, letter to the, to the line?
Yes. For the two amendments.
Yeah.
The two amendments.
Yeah, right, to amend the, right, to amend the, reflect on the map for the parking calculation and the marked-out spaces.
Yep, and CPL's letter.
And CPL's letter, right. Which is, which would be the line before. Okay, so, with that, did you have any other questions?
Myself? No.
No.
Okay. All right. No other items to amend at this point? Okay, so with that, entertain a motion to approve as amended?
I'll move that.
Second?
Okay. Motion's made, seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, you're all set, you just need to get the updated information to the, you know, to the engineer and planner to address their items. Once that's all been concluded, then, you know, we'll, we will move forward from there.
We'll turn that over.
With us right now, you're done with us. You can deal with the, you can deal with staff.
Okay. Again, on behalf of the Adams organization, thank you for the, not only the workability, but the fluidity, and even the proactive nature of some of the consultants, and again, B, because he's our point person, so I'll mention it, but it doesn't go unrecognized and is much appreciated.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. All right, so our next item on the agenda is feral subdivision.
It's basically just a tool, a subdivision. Unless B can pull this on. What we're proposing is to basically subdivide this lot on the Irish corn, and we're going to be creating a lot on the frontage, and there is an existing lot here. In this lot, we're proposing a septic system. We are proposing a septic system for the...
Can you use the microphone so that they can hear? Just bring it with you.
So, we're going to be proposing a septic system on the existing lot, just as a backup required by the Board of Health. Basically, that's it. Both lots are conforming. And we're here tonight just to see if we could set up a public hearing.
All right. So, basically, I guess you've received the letter from both the planner and the engineer?
Yes.
Actually, before we go into that one, yes, we have the driveway for the, for the existing house.
It's through the cemetery.
Yeah, the one that's at the highest point of your map there, yeah.
Microphone.
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 Before he comes running out of the back. So, that, so that one lot there, the driveway, I guess, is going through somebody else's property.
Yeah, the cemetery.
Yeah.
Which we can relocate.
Okay.
We have frontage.
Huh?
We have the frontage.
Okay, so they can get that completely off and restore the, restore the driveway, you know, make it grass or whatever.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything, before we turn it over to...
I have nothing on this.
Okay. All right, well, we start with the planner, let him run through some of the items in his
So, skip down to the environmental. Looks like you've got a couple of endangered or threatened, threatened or endangered species flagged in your EAF. Indiana bat, we see a lot of, blending turtle, we see a lot of too, but the back of the property also has prime potential habitat.
Okay.
So, you're going to want to reach out to the DEC for comment. You've also got quite a bit of Army Corps wetlands in the back, as well as floodplain, so we're going to want to reach out to the Army Corps as well. Given the, the size and the jurisdictions involved, I think it would be a good idea to have your wetlands flagged, have somebody go out there, measure everything, have that reflected on the plan, so that we know where the wetland buffer is. Your plans have a floodplain 100-foot buffer, I don't know that that's a requirement, we just need the proposed development out of the floodplain and out of the 100-foot buffer. But with the amount of waterways back there, we're going to look to have that flagged, and that should be included in any submissions you make to the Army Corps, the DEC. You're also getting flagged for historical and/or archaeological sensitivity. I imagine that it may have something to do with the historic graveyard in the front yard, but we should reach out to SHPO and get their comment. I was curious, I looked on the online mapper, and it looked like there was, it looked like there was an ongoing consultation with SHPO, matching this property, matching this application's description on the website, I was curious if...
How long ago was that, recent?
A few days ago, I checked. It doesn't give a date.
Okay.
Yeah, I just imagine either this was contemplated many, many years ago, and it's ongoing, and, or you have already reached out to SHPO, in which case, we'd be curious to see any correspondence between.
Okay.
Given the number of items, I think it would be a good idea to prepare a long-form EAF for the application.
Okay.
And include that in your next submission.
In our comments, many of whom are duplicated by planning, just add County Health Department for approval of the well and the septic system to the EAF. Site the survey, or prepare the boundary survey. They need to show that limit of disturbance, to see if you're over, under an acre, you're probably going to be over. Wetland boundaries, indicate how stormwater is not going to be directed to the properties to the south, which are at a lower elevation than the proposed driveline house. Erosion control measures, you know, you're going to have to do that. Provide a profile. And we suggest that the applicant meet with the fire advisory board to discuss and get approval for emergency access.
The last, from me, would be the secret procedure for the planning board. As we discussed in the pre-meeting, I think a coordinated review would be a good idea for this application. We can circulate for lead agency if you'd like, but I would wait until we get the revised EAF from the applicant before we circulate.
Okay. And there's also this email here from DCDPW.
I haven't seen it. Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did.
It's the county, the highway comments that we got from the county.
It was just like today or something?
Yeah, like 1:00.
Yeah, okay.
Did you see that mark?
See that before the meeting?
No, you can keep it.
Fine.
I'm a lawyer, I don't read that stuff.
All right. With all that, anybody else have anything, or we're good?
No.
These guys are fine with what's, what's being proposed? They're just, basically just the one new lot, right? Right, out of all of this?
That's it.
Yeah. It seems like, I mean, staff has, I guess, given you a bunch of items to move forward. Question, public hearing required for this, this, for subdivision?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
All right. Just wanted to clarify before we went too far, so, I don't know if you're ready, if you want to, if you wanted to schedule something, or if it's something that you want to get everything else put together first, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, let's, let's go through, there's some comments we probably would be able to address at the public hearing.
Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding 33 Middle Bush Road for site plan and lot-line
Good evening, I'm Troy Wojcicki, engineer for the applicant, 33 Middle Bush LLC. It's been a few months since we were here, and a lot's happened. I'll fill you in. We went to the ZB, this is for the existing block... This is for the existing block, commercial building, just down the street, that we are planning to demolish and rebuild. As such, just to refresh your memory, if you don't remember, the board granted a conditional approval last year for it, but we have to kind of go through the rounds again because now we're going to demolish the building rather than renovate it, as was previously proposed, and that's because of the condition of the building. So, that in turn required us to go to the ZBA to get front yard and rear yard setback variances, which we did. Our plans that we resubmitted addressed or did our best to address the consultant comments. I did review the new comment letters from both consultants and comfortable with all the comments and will let them run through them in just a bit. With this submission, we also submitted a wetland permit application. There's very, there's two areas of wetlands on the property. The first area behind the building, so on the left side of the building, may be Army Corps jurisdictional wetlands. There's other wetlands that are planned top right off the corner of that parking lot, which are considered isolated wetlands, according to the wetland biologists who flagged them. So, I think what we're going to do is we're going to submit a permit application to the Army Corps for coverage under their nationwide permit program. There was actually a recent Supreme Court decision that's limited some of the Army Corps jurisdiction, so this one's actually questionable even behind the building. But I've been informed that the best way to find out is to submit for a nationwide permit, and they might come back and say it's not necessary, but we'll go through that process. Also, because we're demolishing the building, the board and Malcolm suggested that we have to go through seeker, either for an amended seeker determination or starting anew, so we submitted a Part 1 long-form EAF. So, yes, that's where we stand, really no significant changes to the project since we last met, and hopeful if a public hearing is required, we can schedule that tonight and also get the ball rolling with whatever seeker procedure we need to follow.
All right. On this one, Malcolm, this is, should be put out as a coordinator review involving, even though they're...
I think the agencies involved will be limited, but I believe that's what we did last time, so...
Okay. So, we'd have to declare ourselves lead agency, which...
Unless we want to do an uncoordinated review and allow the Army Corps to handle theirs.
Right. As a conditional.
Yeah. Are there any other agencies that you can think of to pull up your EAF?
Just the county, DPW for the highway work permit, and Dutchess County Health Department.
And the Health Department?
Kind of standard.
And all those people are going to do their own reviews and issue approvals whether or not, so...
And they've seen this project before.
Yeah.
Since the last approval, none of that has changed.
No, I understand. Yeah, we went through this already.
The footprint is changing in the building though, right?
No, the footprint's staying.
The same footprint?
Yep.
Okay.
It always had that L at the back?
Yes.
Okay.
Troy, are you over an acre? Do you need the easy stormwater?
No, we're less than an acre.
Okay. I leave it up to the board. It would speed up the timeline if we did an uncoordinated review, and we have reviewed it for the most part. I mean, there are key differences, but we have reviewed the application.
So, those approvals would be just conditional within the resolution?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, as long as the footprint is exactly the same, I don't have a problem with that either, but I know there was some issues with the parking or the turning radius.
There's still corrections. I mean, we still have outstanding comments.
Ridiculous issues.
Yeah, we will need another submission before we can move forward with that, but as far as secret review goes...
Yeah, so as far as secret, maybe we just vote on now, just that the board agrees that we do this under an uncoordinated review. So, he wants to make that motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Motion's made. Seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes. All right, so that takes care of that little bit of formality. Do you want to talk about any of the turning radius issues and parking issues?
We had some comments we need you to clean up, the truck turning templates. It's unclear to me whether or not you will need to widen that curb cut or if you can make it work. We're curious about the, this is the northernmost bay door, the size of the trucks that are going to be coming out of that. The others have much more space to the nearest road parking than the northernmost bay door.
I think some of the, and the zoning board has some concerns as well with the bay doors, but just don't look at those as loading docks for the most part. Any kind of delivery trucks are going to pull in and pull parallel with the building, so they're going to have to use, you know, forklift or some other means to shuffle the product into the building. So, for the most part, you know, there's not going to be in and out of trucks into those bay doors, so I think that would probably resolve that question to the north bay. Because it's really a...
Not necessarily. I mean, the word "the most part" gives me pause. That's my concern. So, if we can put something on the plans as to what the largest vehicles coming in and out of these bay doors is going to be, and show the length of that vehicle so that our traffic engineers can make sure that they're going to be able to get in and out of that northernmost bay door without conflicting with parked vehicles. And the ZBA also had concern with the southernmost bay door and its proximity to the road, right?
Right, and as you may or may not have noticed, we added a sign off the front corner of the building that requires trucks to move past that point. There really is sufficient room for a truck to pull in, even if it were delayed getting all the way into the site. From the white line to the front corner of the building is, what did I say it was? Like 35 feet, so like a FedEx truck is like 26 feet, and to the first bay, it's like 50 feet. So, there's never going to be a situation where a truck's kind of tail end is going to be hanging out in Middle Bush, and that was, you know, raised as a consideration by the zoning board, but I don't really see that as a concern from my point of view. You know, for the most part, you know, it's not going to be a lot of in and out, for one thing, for this type of use, and the trucks are going to generally be of a kind of a box-type truck, 26 to maybe 30, 35 foot long.
So...
No tractor trailers or semi-trailers or anything like that.
My concern with the front bay, the southernmost bay door, is that your turning templates, which it may change when you revise them, but the turning template on entering has it using the exiting lane, which is where you're talking about people pulling up in front of the building to unload...
Yeah, we'll have that corrected. I noticed that as well.
Okay.
That'll be corrected.
Yeah, I mean, that's the issue. They have plenty of room to pull in, as long as there aren't people parked along the building obstructing that movement, which it sounds like will be the operation.
Yeah, again, the chances of two delivery trucks there at the same time is probably pretty slim, and I think there's enough width of the entrance drive, you know, for them to manage, you know, by each other.
And then there's sufficient room for them to turn around on the property and go back out?
Yes.
Not back out onto the road?
Correct, yes.
Right, that's the case.
So, the way it's set right now, we're just banking on two trucks don't show up there at the same time?
That's our concern.
Yeah, that don't sound good.
Even if they do show up at the same time, there's sufficient width in front of the building, the width of the driveway.
It's a 36-foot wide driveway. Which is good width and would allow trucks to pass each other. I think that when they revise the turning templates, it should work out, but the truck turning templates, as they're shown, does not tell that story. So, those need to be revised. I think it would be a good idea to get some information on the largest-sized truck that's going to be used and use that for the turning template. The turning template shows two different labels for the largest-sized truck, so perhaps a more descriptive narrative on proposed operations, particularly in regards to the size of trucks and how they're going to be accessing the building.
Sure.
Got to be a worst-case scenario, too.
Like three trucks showing up at the same time? Yeah. I mean, they're going to be...
It's tight.
They're going to be tenant spaces. These people are going to have access to this garage bay door at any time of day, and they're probably going to have similar business hours, which means that all five of them are going to be expecting access at any time of day and probably similar times of day.
But I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're limited to three tenants, I think, even though we have five bays.
Okay.
So, there's a little bit better coordination with less tenants, less companies there.
Okay. I would include that in the narrative in your next submission.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
On the board?
No.
Don't think so.
Yeah.
I also had a question on signage.
Yeah, we referenced the wrong plan. The site plan has the labels for where the signs are positioned on the site.
So, you are going to have signs above the bay doors or just directional signs in the parking lot? Because that was...
No, we'll have tenant, kind of small placard signs on the face of the building.
Okay, we'll need details of those.
Not advertising kind of thing.
No, not out by the road, but we'll still need details of the signs.
Okay.
Regarding the drainage design, it relies heavily on infiltration. Looking for actual infiltration rates. Those should be determined after elevations of where the infiltration practices are proposed, and the calculations should be revised using those field-determined infiltration rates. We're also asking you to take a look at that 12-inch culvert. The capacity, you know, we're a little concerned about any overloading of that. It can handle about 250 feet, about 200 foot of 100 years stormwater, looking to see what the headwater elevation at that culvert would be, just to see what's happening there.
Also, for the board's information, we had discussed, the county planning department had raised the issue of sidewalks. This road is mentioned in our comprehensive plan. The applicant, four sidewalks, I mean, the applicant is offering a 5-foot wide easement along the front of the property for future sidewalk projects pursued by the town. Also, I mentioned this because in the truck turning templates, it looks like the proposed curb at your curb cut is about 11 to 12 feet shy of the existing curb of Middle Bush?
Yeah, actually, I anticipate, I anticipate the county's going to stick with that. That's basically matching the existing condition, because there's two drainage structures right on the curb.
Yeah.
That's a pretty building right there that would make it prettier. You can see that facing is along that existing curb, which you can see from the photo. I think this one is 12 feet from the white line.
Okay.
And then, let's closer look at that. And it's the same situation on the...
On the other side?
On the other side.
All right. No, that clears it up.
Yeah, so I think the county's going to stick with that, because that would kind of mess up their drainage scheme there.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that it was existing and for good purpose and not being drawn out or an error in the plans. Okay. That's it from me.
Okay. You're all good? So, I guess the one last question, too, is I see there's a, on my way, Paul, into the town hall tonight. You got an excavator sitting there?
Yes.
Going to start knocking the building down tomorrow?
No.
Might get caught.
Might be a little premature for that.
I know, might get caught. Actually, it's there. We're hoping to coordinate with Christian's office to maybe get the storm test pits done this week.
Okay.
So, yes, not to start...
Right, just want clarification. So, do the storm, do the test pits?
Correct.
And then they'll take it out of there. Okay. All right. Okay. Guys, we're all good with this?
Yeah.
Please move forward. Staff has got no more questions?
We schedule a public hearing at this point, do we then?
I guess we could, right? We're pretty close. Yeah, we could schedule. When would you... Like November 6th and November 20th.
We can get it done by November 6th.
November 6th, when's the November 6th cutoff form to make a provision?
16th, right?
Huh?
Today.
Today?
Yeah, I see the 20th.
For the 6th?
November 6th should be the 16th.
November 6th, I mean.
This month?
Yeah. Today is the cutoff? Okay.
The submission is usually four weeks in advance.
All right, so let's say the 20th.
Let's say the 20th.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, so, sorry. Motion to schedule a public hearing for the Middle Bush Road project for November 20th. Okay, motion made. Seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is the site plan special use permit for U-Haul storage, yeah, U-Haul stage door road.
Good evening. Bill Fovell, engineer for the applicant. We're back tonight following our last meeting, where we provided responses to the comments and questions that were raised at the last meeting. There was a lot of little details asked for. At this point, we're really focusing on, you know, the main issues as far as the site plan's concerned. We went back with U-Haul to take a look at the building, and it was requested by the board that they consider some kind of brick on the front corner similar to the Newburgh site. So, what we have before you now, we're proposing a stone instead of brick, but we did change that facing to be a stone-looking finish, and that matches with the veneer, the band that's along the bottom. Also, with the revised architecture, we removed the white siding.
Also with the revised architecture, we removed the white siding and went with more earth tones. So this elevation drawing that you see before you now is reflective of all these changes. You know, we feel this is really going in the direction that the board was asking. As far as signage, we did go back and take a look at that. U-Haul does wanna continue with the proposal, which would need the multiple variances or waivers from this planning board. We did change the U-Haul center sign on the warehouse portion in the back, the second building, so that's not lit anymore. That would just be a regular sign that wouldn't be lit. Thirdly, we went back and we looked at the parking. We went to ITE. They do have parking requirements. They have a lot of studies for mini storage similar to this. So in our initial submission, we proposed, or we showed a required parking count at 135 because there was no true development type parking requirement for many storage in the town code. So we did go to ITE, as was suggested by the town engineer, and by doing that, the parking requirement significantly was reduced. So putting all that together now with this particular plan, the minimum parking requirement, it would be 21 spaces. We are still proposing 58, but the additional 37 parking spaces would be needed for parking the rental vehicles. So that didn't change. But we know, so using this criteria, we dropped the requirement from 135 all the way down to 21. And that's for parking for the mini storage use and the accessory retail and employees for the warehouse. So we feel now that this is more in line with the project and, you know, eliminates the need to provide for an additional 80-something parking spaces. Number four, in five, we did, U-Haul did hire Mike Nowicki at Ecological Solutions to evaluate the endangered species in habitat, as well as the wetlands. And the result of his study is that there were no, there's no habitat for Indiana, for the Blandings turtle. The closest place where that would come into play is across Route 9 in the Greenfly Swamp. So Route 9 acts as a barrier. So his assessment that, you know, in addition to the environmental surroundings, wetlands area, it doesn't provide the habitat that's needed for the Blandings turtle.
Doesn't that wetland feed the one across the street?
Well, it's a drainage area and then there's a pipe that goes through to it, but it doesn't have the gravel soils that the Blandings turtle look for to lay their eggs. So they typically would not, that pipe is almost 200 feet long, so it's not something where any turtles would come through. And again, it doesn't have the soils that they're looking for, for that. And that he talks, he goes into detail in his report that we submitted to the board regarding that. And then lastly was the wetlands. We had a wetland function evaluation and it concluded that, that area is really a drainage area for all the different developments that are around it. And those developments are right up to it. There's a septic system that's basically on the edge of this, this wetland limit, which was probably filled at some point. So his conclusion was the wetland functions were not substantial. In fact, with mitigating on a one-on-one basis like we're proposing and adding the stormwater management, we're actually enhancing the functions with the project. And with that, I do wanna go into the stormwater a little bit. We are proposing a rather large bio retention area between the wetland and the parking lot. And that bio retention practice was selected for that area because it does mimic a wetland, where you, you have to provide all the wetland plants and it promotes nutrient intake as well as infiltration. So that was considered when we did this plan, and that's a benefit to that area, cause the majority of the bio retention areas in what would be the buffer and not the wetland itself. So those are, those were the key responses, you know, and we submitted back to the board. And we're hoping that these changes, you know, see these changes as favorable.
What was the deal with the county's comments on this project?
The county has a couple of different comments. First and foremost, they don't support the, the development of, of anything in a wetland or in the wetland buffer. They recommend the reduction in size of the buildings and the parking areas in order to reorient the site and avoid that impact. They think that the proposed parking is, is larger than it needs to be and, as the applicant, as, as Bill just mentioned, it is bigger than it needs to be based on ITE. Most of those spaces are gonna be used for the storage of, of rental vehicles. They take issue with the architecture of the building, the 300-foot facade, the 300-foot three-story facade facing Route 9. Their words were, "We recommend..." They recommend you do everything in your power to mitigate the visual impact, the mass of the building from Route 9. They take issue with the number of sign waivers being requested, and they propose additional landscaping.
This is the first I'm hearing that you need so many spots for rentals? It seems like there's an awful lot of storage of vehicles gonna happen here. Is this trucks? What, what's gonna be stored? I never heard about this 37 parking spaces.
With all due respect, you know, we had, this is the same parking that we've always proposed and we've always been upfront with the parking and the need for rental vehicles, such as small trailers, vans.
I was under the impression that they were gonna be upfront, near the corner of this building, you know, to do a little advertisement, but I don't, I don't recall hearing 37. I thought there'd be some trailers, a couple trucks, just basically what you see at most U-Hauls for advertisement purposes.
Right. For this, for this U-Haul site, there is, they are 100% going to need parking for rental vehicles and trailers.
Okay.
And with this particular site plan, this really is a minimum for them as far as...
So where would that parking be?
So that, that parking, there would be shunting lanes where they would pull these
Okay.
Rental vehicles in this area here. Cause what you have is you have the trucks, these are U-boxes.
That's all behind the building.
Right, this is, this is all behind the main building.
Okay.
So you have the warehouse building, which is gonna be for the U-boxes. So they, they come in and leave, they leave and come back on tractor trailers. So that they come in, they pull up here, they back into a loading dock, and that's where they, you know, load and unload, and then they come out and around. And what we've done is we've used the area needed in the center there and we designated parking spaces for those rental. So that's in the back. Over here is Route 9. This is staged door road. There are parking spots in the back here, and then there are some, there's a small amount of parking spaces in, in here, and then there's shunting lanes in the center here. Are the shunting lanes going to be used for long-term storage of rental vehicles? Typically not. We're calling them shunting lanes because they are gonna be active, but there is, there's a chance that if a truck doesn't get rented for a period of time, it can sit there. Typically, and I'm, I'm here with Phil Apap, representing for U-Haul, and he could talk more about that, but this is a dynamic parking situation where things are always coming in and leaving. And a lot of the parking that occurs there is by, by the employee. When somebody brings it in, the employee will then, you know, move it around.
Yeah, I get all that, but my big concern is after hearing the county's comments, I actually, I agree with them, you know, that it's, you know, after hearing somebody else...
I'm sorry.
Somebody else's opinion on it being the county. And, yeah, it's pretty, it's awful big for that spot and the encroachment into those wetlands is, it seems excessive. But, you know, what can we do to conform better to what the county is asking for?
Well, we think we've done that.
I think we get more toward the original footprint of the building that's there.
As far as the footprint with their model, what, what they need to put into this site...
Yeah, I get that. Everybody has a model that they'd love to see there, but...
But maybe this, maybe this property doesn't meet their model, that's the problem. That's what, that's where we're at. Trying to put a lot onto a property that's got some constraints. Yeah, I mean, you do have enough field, you know, acreage, but a lot of acreage happens to be, you know, wetlands or wetland buffers and stuff like that. That's what, I think that's what these guys are trying to get out here. But my, yeah, that's, that, yeah, so you, there's like a lot going on here. I mean, is it, you know, so the business needs to be this much, you know, need to have everything? Does it need to have the, you know, the second building in the back? You know, could the first, you know, the front building be reconfigured to make it work better on the property, you know, if it was there by itself? You know, those type of things. And it's what everybody's starting to question at this point.
I think we don't see a lot of projects with that many concerns from the county with something like this, so it makes us kinda look at it again.
Yeah.
And revisit and maybe look at their point of view a little more.
Yeah. And, you know, the signage, I mean, we kinda asked about the signage and said, hey, listen, come back with a, a better plan, and they said no, and it's like, you know, I mean, it's just, I, this, I get it.
Well, I think, I think we're doing a lot here.
Right, but I don't know what it's gonna get them to go to the ZBA, because we're gonna turn around and this board's just gonna say, hey, listen, they said, we, we tried to get them to reduce it, they said no. And the variance is basically, you proposed to them, and it's either yes or no on their behalf. So, I mean, you're, you're basically walking into a, you know, into a negative situation. You know what I mean?
Right.
You know, I'll just, I, I know there's been a lot of discussion since the last meeting, and since the last meeting, you know, we did get the letter from the county, so that has, has stirred up a lot of questions and concerns. So I'll leave it to the board, whether we guys, I mean, I know you threw out a lot out there today, but, I mean, what's everybody's feeling on it? I mean, in terms of...
I'm pretty much conform, conform to what the county is suggesting.
Yeah, I agree with Mark.
As far as, hey, get the footprint, get it back to the footprint of the building that's there, or fix the signs, make it work, or, you know, or possibly look for another site? Cause it's an awful lot of concerns just to, to not worry about it.
The wetland and the... So on that, on that one portion of the property where the, the U-boxes are going, that, that was the area that you filled in?
Correct. Because of the narrowness of the site in that, that wet area or drainage area in the back, the buffer really does encroach on the majority of all four lots.
The buffer encroaches? Is that what you said?
Correct.
Yeah.
Cause the, the wetland line runs along...
The building is encroaching, not the buffer doing the encroaching, right?
Right, well, the buffer extends into the property.
Right.
Quite a bit, because of that drainage area in the back. And when you look at, you know, the other side of it, all the other developments, they're, they're built right up against it.
Let's run that.
Okay. No, go ahead, what do you got? She probably have something.
I mean, I've, I've got many of the same comments, a lot of what the county and, and the board has already expressed. There's, there's disturbance proposed to a, a large amount of the buffer and, and a portion of the wetland itself. Typically, it's been in the practice of this board to discourage that, and when there is disturbance in the buffer, it's, it's at a much smaller scale than what's being proposed. On top of that, the application is seeking an FAR variance and a height variance, as well as a setback variance.
And a signage.
15 sign waivers and a parking waiver. The parking waiver, I think, makes a lot of sense, but in the context of everything else, it seems like too much development on a site that is heavily encumbered. We've, we've looked for opportunities to, to modify and to work with it, and I, it doesn't seem like there is much wiggle room.
Well, based on the county's comments, I, I can't support this as presented. That's my position.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Our office has had a handful of engineering comments, coordination with the various approval agencies, and for the retaining walls, just look for top and bottom wall elevations, and anything over four foot's gonna require drawings and calculates assigned by AP for those. Looking for some details for water supply and a sewer pump station. Had some comments regarding truck movement plans for the site, and our SWIP comments from our July letter are, appear to all be outstanding.
Yeah. We also had some more specific site plan comments, but given the previous discussion, it sounds like if you want to move forward with this, there would be some changes to that site plan. So, I mean, we can go through those comments in more detail if you'd like. We did review... They were pretty straightforward, actually. Yeah. I do think that you should reach out, you know, if you're looking to move this forward, I think you should reach out to the DEC and the Army Corps. I understand that it's a town wetland, but it does drain into the wetland across the street, which is both DEC and Army Corps, and the town would look for their comments on it when evaluating any kind of wetland disturbance permit or secret determination. Yep, I did talk to Mike about that, and he doesn't feel that, you know, with his experience, that there's gonna be too much involvement with DEC and Army Corps on this particular property.
Okay.
But we can, we can reach out to them and, and get that information. Yeah.
So, I mean, at this point, I'm...
I mean, this is the, the layout, this is like the fourth meeting with this.
I know it is. I know, but when the county, when the letter came from the county, which was just after the last meeting you were here, you know, I think everybody started talking and just having concerns about things in that, you know, in that area.
It's also the first meeting we've had since we got your wetland report. I mean, this isn't the first time we've looked at the site plan, but it is the first time that we've reviewed the wetland report. Right, but then the, to me, the wetland report was very accurate in summarizing what this wet area is. Do you, do you have a, a number on the square footage of buffer area that's proposed to be disturbed? It's over two acres. Yeah. The buffer comprises a majority of the, of the four lots. This is four lots that we're consolidating. So the buffer, the entire buffer is within these lots. So, the buffer, the entire buffer is within these lots, within a majority of the buildable area on these lots.
And of those two acres, do you know how much of that area would now be impervious surface?
I don't have that exact number with me, but I can look into that.
Yeah, I think that, I mean...
But with this particular layout, we really tried to keep the buildings as, to shield that, the wetland area and keep the parking and maneuverability away from it. With that...
But all of it would require grading.
Of course.
Yeah, and all of it involves some level of disturbance in impervious area.
Right, but, you know, when it's all said and done, there's going to be no activity on that side of the building towards the wetlands. It's just going to be unused land. So, that reduces the chances of any kind of impacts. As well as all the grading and drainage has been designed to discharge, just stormwater management areas. And again, in this area here, which is close to where the wetlands are and the closest part of the buffer, we are proposing a BIR retention.
Yeah.
Stormwater management, and again, that, that has similar functions to a wetland.
I think that you're heavily constrained by the site, but as a result, I mean, it's, it is a lot of disturbance in the wetland area and the wetland buffer, and that's something that we have not, we've been actively discouraging. So, I, I think that that coupled with the FAR variance requests, the other variance and waiver requests leans towards an intensive use, an intensity of use and an intensity of development that, if we could see that scaled back, we would, we would be happy to move forward with, but given your representations, it, it sounds like this is the, this is the model. This is as small a development as you're willing to move forward with.
All I could say is I can go back and discuss this, you know, with U-Haul, but again, they, they have minimum requirements that they're looking to achieve here.
Yeah.
Again, it...
That's why we asked the other agencies for their info, input.
Yeah. As far as the variances, you know, I understand the sign variances, and again, I'm going to go back and convey that to U-Haul, but...
Sign variance.
The area variances, we already have, the frontage on Route 9 where we need a frontage variance, that's similar to what the existing building is, and there's a real wide right-of-way there. So, where the building is actually placed along Route 9, if it was a conventional right-of-way line, the offset from the edge of the pavement where the building's located is consistent with what a zoning requirement would be.
I don't think that's the variance that gives us...
No, I understand, I understand.
I don't think anybody's concerned about that one. It's more, you know, this, we discussed earlier, you know, signage.
No, I understand.
Signage, height, you know, number of stories, you know, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a much taller building, it's going to, you know...
And again, we...
It's a tower, it's a tower at the entrance to the town.
We're not looking for a height variance, we're looking for a story variance.
Yeah.
And we're putting one story below grade, so the building height-wise would look similar to what a permitted...
But is it, but if you're putting one story below grade, then how do you need the height variance?
We don't need a height variance, we need a...
Story variance of the basement?
It allows two and a half stories, and we're proposing three, so we need a half-story variance.
It's a, it's a two-story building from Stagedore Road, it's a three-story building from...
Route 9.
Well, no, we're proposing to fill a majority of that lower floor, so it would look similar to a two-story building from Route 9. And that was a change we made after the first meeting.
Yeah.
So, the building, the way it will look, will look like a two-story building.
So, would the bottom story be considered a basement?
Yes.
Then I don't think you need the variance.
Well, the way the code's written, if, if the basement is used as a similar use as the rest of the building, I think it comes into play.
Okay.
Billy, if you go three stories, are you going to have to sprinkle that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're proposing a, a storage tank.
And probably an elevator too, right? The three stories?
Correct. Yep.
Now, you mentioned the DOT. Is the pipe that crosses to the Greensfly Swamp, is that on your property or is that further up the road?
There's actually two pipes that are in the DOT right-of-way that go almost 200 feet across Route 9 before they discharge into that area.
Now, is, so is the inlet a budding your property or is it further north?
It's a budding our property.
Okay.
I think both of them are, right?
Yes.
Because there's one, that's sort of the southern tip of the property, and there's one at the northern edge of where it is, a budding Route 9.
I mean, maybe it might, you might want to just go back and talk to U-Haul and see what they're, you know, where they're willing to, you know, if they're willing to give on any of these items, that's all.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you.
And we'll go from there, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Charles May, representing the K&amp;J Partnership. Known as the, the project is known as the Lakari subdivision, which is located at 39 Middlebush Road. Some of you may be familiar with a building on there, it was a restaurant, which was Stefano's. The object of the property is to subdivide it into two lots. We're in the R-2040 residential zone. In the R-4020 residential zone, we would only need a square footage of 30,000 square feet. We have one lot, which has already been subdivided, which is 30,709 square feet, and we have another lot, which has been subdivided, which is actually 40,977 square feet. Just to go back through the history of what has occurred in the particular project, the intent originally was to subdivide the property and design new sewer, septic and well for the additional building that was going to be proposed. However, we had a meeting with the Dutchess County Health Department, Dan Keeler, and when we observed the existing sewage disposal systems, they were inadequate. So, the client has now proposed a sewer line, which would actually cross Middlebush Road, go up Middlebush Road and cross Camilli Drive, and be connected to an existing sewer manhole where it would then discharge into the Tri-Municipal Sewer System. We, we are here to try to move the project forward due to the fact that the, it's my understanding that the Tri-Municipal is now in a state of temporary moratorium, so we would like to move this project forward. The entire scenario of the project would be to remove the existing building and put in a residential building, which would be approximately, we feel as though it would be approximately three bedrooms. We have submitted plans to the, to the town regarding the project. As a matter of fact, we have submitted a, the subdayer's final plat, which has been reviewed by the planner as far as the setbacks and as far as the requirements for the actual square footage of the, of the property. We've also submitted a demolition plan indicating that we are going to demolish the existing septics, and we're also going to demolish the existing building, which is, which is presently there. Along with that, we have a grading plan, we have a solid erosion control plan, which has been reviewed by the, by the town engineer. Essentially, the, also, just recently, we had the sewer line profile, which was reviewed and comments were sent to Mrs. Agante from Bill Trifilo from the Dutchess County Highway Department, which I believe, hopefully was the, the comments were emailed to everyone. He has reviewed the sewer line, and he has actually approved it, and he looked at, looked at it and thought it was fine. So, with that, we have just a couple of, one or two comments from the planner, which indicates that we want, he wants to have the Indiana BAT Advocancy add a note to the plat stating that compliance with the New York State DEC, Indiana BAT mitigation measures, which we would have no problem doing. We also have some comments from the town engineer, which indicate, one of the, one of the comments that we have already addressed would be to submit the plans to the Dutchess County Highway Department, so we've already fulfilled that obligation. Along with that, there are some other comments regarding, we would have to go to the Dutchess County Health Department for review, which we intend to, to move the project along and submit it to them for review. So, having, having said that, we would entertain any comments that the board might have.
I was kind of wondering what's up with the moratorium on the sewer line?
So, with respect to DEC, with respect to Tri-Muni, Tri-Muni is in the process of having their sewer permit, their individual speedies permit renewed. So, DEC had raised some issues regarding INI. They wanted reports from the constituent municipalities regarding their attempts to address INI, and they're waiting to hear from the town, the two towns in the village regarding plans for INI, because they had requested that with respect to their permit renewal.
What's that mean in English?
It means there, I mean, there's no formal moratorium, you know, nobody's, there's some legal questions as to whether or not certain of the entities can even do that.
Yeah, so it's, bottom line, this is not stopping their application in front of the town board?
No, I mean, it's, you know, right now, the engineer for Tri-Muni had indicated that there's sufficient capacity in the plant to support this proposal. In fact, he said that it might actually, you know, one of, the issue with respect to Tri-Muni is peak flows as a result of INI. Day-to-day, day-to-day treatment capacity is sufficient. It's on wet, large storm events where there's flows through the plant that are probably two to three times the permitted capacity on a, an event where you get four inches of rain or three inches of rain, so, which is a tendency, which, you know, in a sewer treatment plant, one of the ways, one of the advantages of, or one of the design mechanisms is to slow the flow down so that, you know, the solids and things in the wastewater can settle out.
Yeah.
But when you have a large flow event and things are flowing through the plant very speedily, it overwhelms the, the treatment capacity and flows into the river. So, there's been, you know, several events over the years of the permit, and, you know, DEC is looking to, to work on that. But with respect to the stormwater or the INI issues, that's upstream of the plant, I mean, the INI, the, the inflow and infiltration is from the collection system, not the treatment facility.
Okay.
So, so that's basically what's happening, is they're, they're looking for formalized plans from the municipalities regarding upgrades to the, to the collection system.
So, there's no effect to this application?
Right now, the, the effect is that the board is waiting for further determination from DE, from, you know, they're looking for more feedback from DEC, but, you know, right now...
So, let's hypothetically, if something is wrong there, do they, do you guys have like a backup plan if we can't connect?
Do you have to go back to the septic system? Is that the case?
Do they have the, I mean, you can hand, you can do a septic system there if need be, or?
Currently, there are three septic systems, and they're all shot, so...
Yeah, because there's three, there's the restaurant and then the two houses or something, or whatever it is.
The more cost-effective approach is to tie into the sewer, so that's our goal.
Sure.
So, we're looking for approval on this, hopefully tonight, contingent upon Tri-Municipal granting the sewer tie-in.
Okay.
I had a question, though. This project is going to require this property to be added to the sewer district, correct?
Correct.
One or both of the lots?
Both.
Both. So, both are going to be hooked up to sewer. How many connections do you have to the sewer?
It'll be a total of three.
So, it's three separate boards, three separate laterals from, okay. I just want to make sure that the, or connecting, otherwise there'd be a transportation corporation.
Right.
Just want to make sure that that doesn't...
Three separate laterals.
Okay. By all that's contingent upon being added to the district.
I mean, DE, basically, once DEC gets what the information they want for purposes of the permitting capacity, for the issuance of the permit, this approval should be granted. It's not, it's not, again, it's not a question of capacity at the plant, it's, it's a question of INI.
So, they're stalled, okay, so it's just stalled based upon getting the permit renewed?
Correct.
Okay, all right, which has nothing to do with us or anything?
No, I mean, any approval that this...
I believe, I believe the permit has been expired for at least three years. So, it's been in process for over three years.
Okay. All right, so...
Any day now.
Yeah, so any day now.
All right, so other than, okay, so other than DEC, who else do we need? What do we look for approval wise?
The Dutchess County DPW, right? You've got, and you've got a work plan, traffic plan. Have you, have they reviewed that? I mean, I guess we got a bunch of emails very late today, a chain of emails late today. I haven't read through that, is what that is referring to.
Yeah.
From my perspective, you know, from a planning perspective, it's relatively simple. They meet their bulk area calculations. The lots are adequately sized, the buildings are adequately spaced. There's a standard DEC note that we would see added to the plans, and there is the question of coordinated or uncoordinated review and the secret process.
Yeah, so what's the board's feeling on this? Do we, do we do a coordinated review, circulate for agents here, or do we uncoordinated review? Most of these items get wrapped up in a, you know, they'll get wrapped up with the resolution at the end of the day, they have to meet everybody's requirements. The last one, I think we just did, was a, was a coordinated review for the one previous tonight?
Yeah, it seems like a lot of stuff still up in the air, no?
That one, yeah, for our, we did a coordinated, there's a lot of items.
A lot more, a lot of wetland issues and other things.
We did a, we're doing a coordinated for Ober Creek, but they've got, you know, major agencies that were looking for input from, I, I think that we could do an uncoordinated review with this. I think that they would need to, I mean, every, everything else...
As I say, outside of the subdivision itself, there's really not a lot of us to have to deal with.
No.
There's no, there's no wetlands on the property or any, you know, buffers that we're dealing with, we're dealing with this, so...
And all of the other approvals, they would need to get permits. I mean, it's, you know, it's not...
Which is out of our...
Yeah, it's, you know, they're, they're either going to get a Tri-Muni permit, they're going to get a work permit from Dutchess County DPW, or they're not, yeah.
So, it's worth noting, we do have the approval from DPW, got to go ahead, and we also met with Board of Health, and they gave, they gave us the green light as well to tie into the septic, or the sewer rather.
No conceptual on what the house will look like yet?
Most likely, just a three or four family home, similar to what's in the surrounding neighborhood.
Three or four bedrooms.
Sorry.
Bedroom, yeah.
Slightly different project all of a sudden.
All right, so somebody want to make a motion to do a uncoordinated review for the project?
I'll do that.
Okay. Motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that takes care of the issue with Saker. So, did we, I just can't remember, did we have a public hearing for this one previously?
No. We only had, they only appeared once before us and we didn't.
Was it only one time?
Yeah, and it was still uncertain what form the project was going to move forward with and so, I mean, it's been a couple of months since we've seen them, so.
All right. If we do a public hearing, we want to see a better set of plans on what's going up there and everything here. I think what you got is what you got. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think there's much more that they're going to give us because more is everything that they're going to submit to everybody else, you know, DEC, you know, County Highway, but it just sounds like they have that approval for the curb, you know, for the curb cut, so, I don't know, I don't know how much more we'd be expecting.
I'm pretty sure we did have a public hearing. I remember posting signs about, I think it was last year, we did one.
Did a public hearing?
There was a public hearing on the ZBA.
I'm sorry.
The ZBA, so yeah, that's separate from us, that's two separate entities.
What was that variance for, Paula?
Isn't it for a lot?
There is neighbors. Yeah, there's neighbors around there on both sides. And the ZBA has been very good at like throwing us under the bus recently. They just kind of like tell everybody, well, it will be in front of the planning board and you'll have your opportunity again, so. Much as I hate to say that, but it'd probably be, we probably should schedule a public hearing, which would be. Definitely. And from that point, as I said, if nothing evolves from the public hearing, I mean, it pretty much couldn't be done with us, it'd be moving on to a resolution at that point, you know, for approval, you know, with the conditional approval, just have to meet everything, you know, all those open items, you know, and get the staff's approval at that point. So probably should just, you know, we should probably schedule a public hearing at this point. So with that, yeah, well, let's see, I don't know what, I think we determined that the year earliest would be November the 20th? How many public hearings do we have on that day already?
We went out that far for someone who needs to submit a full submission. If they're not submitting any public hearing.
So we can go back to?
Six.
Sixth of November, okay.
That works.
That works for you guys?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for the Wakari subdivision for November 6th. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's made, say it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll see you then.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so the last thing on the agenda this evening is conceptual review for Old State Road Warehouse.
Good evening. Mark Day, Dave Secosa, I'm here to represent, the project is between Sergeant Volmitier Way and Old State Route. Currently, there's two existing structures, one's a single-family house, one was a retail, which I believe has been partially together. The applicant wishes to construct a pre-engineered building, about 57, 50 square feet. We would have four overhead doors in it and it would be used for.
The microphone.
And that would be used basically for indoor storage, strictly warehouse.
The existing retail building will be reconstructed for retail, because I believe it's required by the code.
Is it the existing retail building?
Yeah, there's an existing building on it that was used for retail.
Yeah.
For the life of me, I don't remember what it was, but I believe it was partially demolished.
The two houses, one was retail, one was.
I'd say, I think it was an office, wasn't it an office?
It was an office, it was a nursery, school, then, it actually, I don't think it ever really reopened. They came in for, to do something with Elgin and one was going, I think they were both going to be residential and then they came back and changed it again, but since that time, even though they've been signed, they've never actually done anything. They cleared the lot with a grading permit, they got a permit to demo, I think, an old garage. The point is, nothing's really happened. One house still has a broken front window and whatever they cleared is grown again.
One of the things we'd like to, I mean, we may have an issue with the existing retail, is it something we can do to single families on that parcel?
Well, it's HB, so under mixed use, I guess if you had the.
We could do retail in part of the new building if that's okay with the board. We just think we may have an issue trying to, offices right now are tough.
So what's the intent with the building? Because I mean, it's a, you know, four-bay garage, more or less.
Just indoor, indoor storage of whatever equipment, rental for.
One tenant, four tenants?
It could be four, up to four. One would be the applicant and then the balance maybe.
But no outdoor storage?
No.
What's the applicant's business? I mean, sorry, excuse me there.
Good evening, board. I'm an owner of two Snap-on franchise routes, so we house a lot of equipment, whether it's automotive equipment and hand tools, power tools and things of that nature. So I'd be taking two of the bays and then I'd be potentially renting two of the bays.
So they'd be, would that be for auto repair and stuff there?
No, no auto repair.
Just storage of the equipment?
We literally just store equipment, that's it.
Okay. So if the board will.
Can we get your name, name for the record?
Gabe Bagan.
Okay, all right, then.
So if we could, if it's possible, one of the bays may be used for retail, we just think there's a better draw on the bigger buildings. We're just seeing that the smaller buildings are harder to rent retail. If possible, if we, if the board was okay with it, we would move the retail component into the bigger building and then create two residential lots, single-family homes rather, sorry.
Well, you'd have to look at density calculations for mixed use. That looks at, you've got a certain portion of the lot being used for three units per net lot area. And then that can't compete with the FAR dedicated to the non-residential portion, but that would be the special permit you were looking for. And if you're looking to do, I mean, storage, possibly renting out two of those bays, I'm not sure if that's warehouse or more applicable to the contractor's yard special permit like we had at 33 Middle Bush. It would depend on a more detailed narrative, but it's just, you know, we're just talking about which special permits you would be looking at.
Okay.
To apply for and giving you an opportunity to look at the requirements of those and make sure that they are requirements that you feel comfortable that you'd be able to comply with.
All right.
Do you have well and septic or are you on water and sewer?
Right now, you got, you got existing, but we're going to have to reevaluate because of, you know, just because of the age of the systems.
It looks like the previous applicant had a sewer system put in, so there is a sewer system put in the property, but there's.
You guys stand up, yes, I'm sorry. So the previous, so what you're saying is basically the previous owner hooked up to the town sewer system?
To the town sewer for the two single-family homes.
Okay.
It goes as far as, what's the, yeah, there's, I mean, there's a sewer line on here, but it's south of, what's, south of Nissan, what's the one?
I think it goes through Performance Motors in Elgin, right through.
Yeah, and the property, I think it's a property north Elgin's, isn't it?
Yeah, I remember, I remember we did.
The one where they just put the.
We did have discussion the last time they were here regarding the sewer.
Yeah.
I just don't remember.
It's the property that was, the certified motors or whatever. Plymouth and, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's in, that was in the district, so that was, I believe, the northernmost property and that's, I think, opposite this, so. And it's in, it's in Sergeant Palmetier domain, which is what this shows.
Cross, cross.
Well, that's a big, that's the truck.
Big pay.
Oh, jeez.
Just one.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, here's a sewer manhole here.
I think I'll get those measured.
And then the other thing is, if you look at the setback, you're going to get, you need a variance to do anything.
Any new construction on the site, looks like it's going to need some kind of.
Unless it's a really, really thin build.
Thin lot.
But it's a good reason to rebuild existing structures.
I think kind of sort of.
Tall rate on the existing footprint.
Yeah. What's the, what's the proposed height of the building going to be?
I would say your E light's probably about, I would say 18 feet. I would think your ridge would be about 22 for a pre-engineered building.
Okay. Okay, so I mean, if you just, I mean, it's kind of, I mean, it is close to the road, that's all. It's just, I mean, how are you going to?
I'd be curious to.
I'm just, I'm curious too about a couple, I was just thinking about the other, because you have the other side, which abuts all those houses on the Old State Road on the opposite side of the street. How are you going to handle, you know, just lighting and things like that?
We could probably drop the E light down to 16, but he does have internal racking, so that's why.
Okay.
I mean, the other, the only thing, I mean, I see kind of what you're getting at, but if you push the building more towards Sergeant Palmetier, then the access and the activity to get into the building would be on Old State Road. So for the budding neighbors, the building is probably better as a screen between them and the activity on the lot.
Reversing it, putting it on the other side.
Well, I mean, if you put it on the other side, then they, then the coming and going of all the traffic is going to go out to Old State Road, whereas here, it's on Sergeant Palmetier.
It'd be on Sergeant Palmetier and less of the impact.
On the property, because you then have the building as a buffer between the residential properties and the activity on the lot. You know, unless you're, I mean, and they're just talking about warehouse uses, it's not, I mean, it might be different if they were looking at a machine shop or something like that.
Yeah.
But the indoor uses are probably, you know, not particularly disruptive. It would be the forklifts or trucks coming in and out. I don't think you'd want them on Old State Road.
No, definitely not.
Probably want more screening than what's shown to, between any proposed building and the house.
Yeah, I mean, if they reverse it and they heavily screen the backside of it, I mean, so it's not as, you know, it breaks it up for the neighbors, yeah, that makes sense. You know, then the lighting's not an issue because the lighting would be in the front of the building, be going towards Sergeant Palmetier.
Right.
You know, have that, that effect and the noise effect too, as Jim was saying, the noise is going to be buffered, noise will be buffered to, you know, to the neighbors in the back, you know, most of it would be projected towards, you know, out towards Route 9, so.
And you might want an architectural because those people, some of them were not happy with the way the Performance Motors steel building looked. It's going to be right in front of them now.
Yeah.
So like T-111 siding?
Something pretty.
T-111? They still like that.
You won't, you won't be able to go there all night long, going in and out, right? You get stuff?
Right, there's going to have to be stuff.
Oh, I don't, no, we're not.
Ours' operation will be limited?
Yeah, no, it's not, we're, we're pretty much shut down by about 6:00.
Okay.
And this is all new parking, right, proposed?
Yeah, well, there is an existing gravel parking area there, which we're going to relocate to the north, and then we're going to propose new parking for the proposed building.
Is that parking all for the proposed building or would it be for the two single-family homes as well?
I think it's, I think it's shared, I think we're sharing it.
Okay.
Because that was one of the, right, didn't they make an amendment to put in a handicap? Didn't come back for that one time?
They kept coming back.
No, no, I mean, the prior, I believe, I kind of remember one time, somebody came back in to amend the site plan for a handicap space?
I don't know.
Or maybe it was at the end of their application, I can't remember.
I mean, residential, this board asked the last time to somehow segregate it so that whoever's living there, especially their children, they're not coming into the same area, the trucks are coming.
Okay.
Like Barbara said, it should look pretty.
Well, at least more attractive than just the plain metal.
So, so we'll make the amendments or revisions based on what we saw tonight and just submit to the board?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you really, if you want to go forward, yes, you'd have to make a full submission.
Okay.
Obviously, you'd have to, you know, again, all the comments that we kind of brought up tonight, would probably be a good idea to make sure they're all incorporated into that.
Okay. Any questions?
You guys have anything else, or?
The entrance would be from Palmetier?
Yes.
Yeah, we're actually showing it, we're showing it on Sergeant Palmetier.
That's all about screening and taking, making sure. Screening and making it look, yeah. You got to make it look. Make it look nice.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And, yeah, before we adjourn, we were talking about this earlier. I think that we had all discussed, but never actually made a motion to circulate lead agency for Ober Creek Brewery. So if we do that now, we can get that circulated tomorrow morning.
We could.
That'd be good.
Somebody want to make a motion? I'll make that motion, certainly for lead agency. All right.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. One and two, yep. Marco.
It's a team, though.
Okay, all right, so with that, we're at the end of the agenda. Entertain a motion, unless somebody's got anything else they want to talk about tonight?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made, is second all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.